I'd like to open the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 25, 2019. My name's Kathy Corson. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. I will introduce the Board and then we will begin our meeting. On my right is Ann Sherman, Select Woman. Molly Cowan is next to her. She is our Vice Chair.
Good morning.
I mean evening. Sorry, everybody. It's all right. I think Ann thinks it's morning anyway.
It is morning or the clock that I'm on.
On my left is Nico Papinkos-Denis, who is our Clerk.
Good evening.
Julie Gilman, Select Woman. And Rustine is our Town Manager. Joanna Bartel will be doing our note-taking. We appreciate that. First, I will open it up for public comment. And if you could step forward, state your name and your address. And if you have anything to discuss that's on our agenda, if you could wait till that item is on the agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Sheila Mullin. I live at Four Cross Road. And I'm here tonight to comment on the decision made by the Select Board to allow Seacoast Farm Compact Products, Inc., a one-year lease of the sand pit in the Old Simpson property. I have submitted a written request for a rehearing of this decision. I am here tonight to make my request part of the public record. I am requesting a rehearing because the Select Board seemingly ignored the zoning ordinances for the town of Exeter. This land in question is zoned R1 low-density for single-family homes. There are no exceptions for such a business. The proper zoning and planning requirements were not met. The abutters were not informed of this proposal and had no knowledge of its nature. I have grave concerns about this commercial venture in our neighborhood. I wish to have my concerns addressed. And in addition, it is my understanding that Bob Kelly is a member of committees in the town of Exeter, one of which is a budget committee. This presents to me and many others as a direct conflict of interest between his role with the town and this application for a business in a residential neighborhood. Please consider a rehearing of this matter to give due process to the abutters and neighbors. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I will just comment that we didn't have a... It was not a specific public hearing for the matter. It was a... The... I'm going to try to explain this. But your request is really a zoning board request if it had gone to the zoning board. But seeing... I know there's a lot of questions on this. And actually, we've sent a lot of the information in our memorandum of understanding to DPW. They are going through and they do have some concerns and are asking for some clarifications. And I do know that the neighbors are concerned. And I just wondered if we could... And I think maybe the December 16 meeting, if we could have Bob Kelly here so that the questions that you have and the questions that we have can be answered. And if that makes sense to everyone. Because I will say that we were given tonight questions that our DPW has submitted to Bob Kelly on his operation. So... And we could discuss this, but I would like the person here that is part of the situation.
And I wasn't here to discuss it tonight. I just needed to state my concerns because I felt like a decision was made without including the people whom are impacted by this incredibly.
I understand.
And I'm very upset about it. And I know there are other neighbors here, too, that are equally as upset by the process and the lack of inclusion of people in the neighborhood that will have to live with this.
I appreciate your concerns. And you're more than welcome to come up and state your issues. But like I said, we will be discussing it at a later date.
My name's Deborah Senza. I live at One Great Hill Court, also across the street from the property in question. And I just want to... I guess two things. One, ask why it did not go before the ZBA. And secondly, ditto everything Sheila has previously said.
I will wait... We will have an explanation at that future Board meeting.
Hi. Good evening, folks. Don Clement, 5 Thelma Drive. I became aware of this a couple of weeks ago when you did the action to actually approve the MOU. And I think the cleanest thing we could do, and I would like to have the Board consider this, is to reconsider your vote, actually to rescind your vote of two weeks ago to start this process all over again. Like the abutters, I'm concerned about due process here. I think due process was skipped. And it could be good reasons for that. I don't know. But I think due process was skipped via the zoning board and actually also the planning board. I'm concerned from an environmental standpoint. This particular area is an aquifer area. It's very high water table. And there is potential of the high-water table, the groundwater seeping into the river and causing further particular possible damage to the Exeter River. So for that reason, and any other reasons I'm talking about, I would ask the Board if they would consider, as I said, rescinding their action they took two weeks ago and starting the process all over again so that everyone can have an opportunity at a public process that is a formal public process. Formal public hearings can have an ability to speak and be heard. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Jerry Hamel, 17 Little Pine Lane. I was here at the last meeting. And I just was here tonight to express my disappointment in the vote that was taken. And I just hope that, as Dawn said, and to all the neighbors, because of the lack of information given to everybody and the lack of problems that could exist out there, that they reconsider this whole thing and do it the proper way. Thank you.
My name is Rick Carr. I'm at Four Cross Road as well in Exeter. And I'm sure everyone's views expressed. And a final one is about the safety, both traffic and air-water pollution potential are major things. My understanding is... I know it's proposed as at the bottom of probably one of the biggest hills in Exeter. We're talking about major... From what I understand, tractor-trailers, and not just a few, but many every day. So I'm thinking noise, safety. My understanding is there's been two major accidents out there right around that site. To think of major, fully-loaded tractor-trails turning in that area where there are residents going back and forth on that road. There's a blind curve right before it. There are a number of things that just, safety-wise, makes no sense to me. And again, we've already just gone through a similar thing of a cell tower that was reversed. And that was for a similar reason. The abutters were not notified properly. So they did have it reversed and gone, and then they went away. I don't know what it is about our area, but sometimes you feel a little bit picked on. And I've been a taxpayer for over 30 years. And pay them faithfully. It doesn't feel like I'm being treated, given a fear shake. So.
Thank you.
Point.
Anyone else? Any other subjects?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question as well.
Yes.
Because a lot of comment tonight, a lot of thought. Because we just found out tonight, or I just heard for the first time, that we're meeting on the 16th with Mr. Kelly. What's going to be different about that meeting that he's here? Who else is going to be here? I mean, what other representatives from other areas are going to be here? Because I'm confused as to how much difference that meeting's going to make compared to what we're doing here. I mean, that doesn't follow the process. I'm not sure if that's going to answer what people are asking for. Is that what's going to make that meeting different?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
One of the things that's going to happen is that if we so choose, and I will actually do it, request a motion to rescind our previous motion for further discussion. So that will be publicly posted as to contacting the abutters directly and whether we believe a ZBA violation has occurred. That's something that we need to look in before the 16th.
Right. So I guess I would go back to what we said originally. I don't understand why we couldn't have done all of this before we rushed into signing or approving that MOU. Because we, as a Board, looked at that MOU. We didn't even look at the MOU. The first meeting we had over two weeks ago was Mr. Kelly coming here and talking about this. The very next meeting, which was two weeks later, an MOU showed up. That is lightning speed for a lot of things that we do. And I have a real concern about that to begin with. Because the MOU is lacking in a lot of terms and conditions that I would put in there. And I guess my other concern is, if we don't follow due process, what is to prevent any of these abutters challenging this decision going forward? I'm not interested in having the town be involved in any kind of legal issue over this if we haven't crossed Ts and dotted every i on something like this. This is a change of use. I think we really need to consider rescinding that decision.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I should probably speak to this a little bit. Mr. Kelly came to our office and had asked that we consider this proposal. And of course, we know that there have been two public meetings with respect to the proposal, including a memorandum of understanding drafted up. And part of that was predicated upon his need, and I think he discussed it publicly, the need that he has to relocate. And so he had actually engaged our Public Works Department in some conversations about composting and bringing aspects of his operation to Exeter, where he is a resident. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that was the springboard, if you will, to get into the conversation. And then the question became, what form of agreement would be workable, if you will, under that kind of scenario? And the options that were presented to us were that, obviously, you could go before the zoning board. It was unclear, and it still is unclear, whether this project would need site plan review. And the other option that was presented to us at the time was, as the Board discussed at your last meeting, the one-year revocable license concept, where terms and conditions could be drawn up for a license to allow the operation to go forward. But in the meantime, the zoning board and/or planning board approvals would have to be achieved by Mr. Kelly in order to have the operation continue. So I just wanted to put some context on the prior two public meetings' worth of conversations and the areas that were discussed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right. And I certainly appreciate that summary, Mr. Dean. It still does not change the fact that we are putting the cart before the horse. We are not following the process of somebody doing a zoning change, a change of use in an area that will affect abutters. I can't... It's what I said the first night. It's what I've been saying for the last couple of meetings. It's very concerning to me that we, as a Board, aren't following the process. We are a process-driven Board. What are we doing?
Okay. Any other comments? Yes. Would you like to speak, Mr. Carr?
For the record, Rick Carr, again, Four Cross Road. Yes. I just... I don't know about you, but if this... Given all the different concerns you just heard in this very brief, not even fully researched situation, which we will be that much more prepared in two weeks. But I just want the safety concerns from a number of different things. Traffic, safety, air-water. A year temporarily leased. I don't know about you, but if I had potential toxicity in my backyard, I wouldn't want a year trial. So, point made.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Yes. Can you get up?
I'm sorry. Don Clement, 5 Thelma Drive, again. This is on a different subject.
Okay.
So I wanted to know if anybody else still had something to comment to make on the first subject. I'll wait to that, but I had a comment on another subject.
Go right ahead. Did you have another comment?
I have to say that Ann Sherman's the only person that is supporting the people that live in our neighborhood. And my name is Sheila Mullin. I live at Four Cross Road. Sorry, I was up here before. And I don't understand what difference it makes whether or not someone is losing a lease on a piece of property where they have a business and they have a timetable to get out of there. And so that urges you all to hurry to make a decision about something that hugely impacts the lives of people that live in that area. That makes no sense at all to me. And I heard everything that Mr. Dean said. And that was all said at the last two meetings, even though the story changed from one meeting to the next. It just...
Can you say what you mean by that?
Well, in the first meeting, there were 10 to 15 18-wheelers coming down the road. And then by the end of the second meeting, it was four to five. So that's one example. It just doesn't make sense that that would be the reason why you would rush to make a decision about this, that someone is losing their lease on a business in another town.
So I would like to say something.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody who came here to share what you're thinking about and how it's going to impact your homes. I can only speak for myself, but the reason that I voted in support of this was because it didn't seem to me to be a change. We currently compost there. And it seemed to be a net benefit to our town. I would be in favor of rescinding the vote and having a public hearing if that's the will of the Board. That's okay with me. That's fine with me. But I think also we need to weigh the efforts to be sustainable. You know, when I talked about it with colleagues in different towns, they also talked about how they're trying to bring in public-private partnerships in order to make scenarios like this work, which was really exciting. And so I certainly don't want to put the cart before the horse in terms of negatively impacting your neighborhoods. But I also think we need to be realistic about what we're doing with the things that we have. And how can we look at public-private partnerships in an innovative and creative way? And how can we benefit people, both business, because we have to consider that, but also the benefit to the greater community of having... Being sort of a composting community. I mean, I think that that's really exciting. So I would be in favor of rescinding the vote and diving more into the details. But it didn't seem to me like it was a change in use. We currently compost there. It didn't seem... I mean, it's off a state highway, which I understand is also your neighborhood. So I don't want to minimize what you all are going through or not take, you know, have the accusation that I don't take my constituents seriously.
Do you... Would you like to rescind?
I mean, I'll vote for Julie's motion if she's going to make that motion.
I believe we have to have public notice before that happens.
Right. So I believe that if we, on the 16th, hear both... I'm assuming we'll hear both sides of the story. And then if we feel that we need to rescind at that time, then we will. Is that what you were getting at?
You have to notice it one way or the other.
Yeah, Mr. Carr had something to say.
You have to notice this.
We'll make the motion and then discuss it.
If you want to, sure.
I'll wait. Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
For the next meeting? For... Our next meeting is the second, which is next week.
Call it the chair.
But I did want to get more information and before we do this just in one meeting.
Sure.
So because we do have some questions. And I'd like Mr. Kelly to have his... Understand what we're doing. Yes.
Deborah Senza, again, from One Great Hill Court. I had a question regarding Molly's comment about it being a public benefit to the town of Exeter. I'm wondering what the public benefit is other than, I'm assuming, tax dollars?
I mean, quality compost. Being able to have our town... You know, we just had a significant vote to be more sustainable. I mean, this is a big way to do that.
Is the compost coming from Exeter citizens or going to Exeter citizens?
Both.
Both.
We are also have proposed that he does not currently... He has told us that he does minimal animal manure. We have said, no, we don't want that as part of his operation if he does this. We did, however, ask him if we could set up a town-wide food waste. Now, we're just talking the town. And I suspect that if we did this, not many people would participate. We're not talking restaurants and trucks coming in that has food waste. But apparently, that's not anything that people would want. Not everybody would want. I personally would love to have a food waste... Ability to do that at the transfer station. Because that is another sustainable, especially with our increase in the cost of waste in trash. So. Yes, Mr. Carr?
Just want to make a couple of responses to Molly. The difference... I'm a gardener, first of all. I love compost. I compost. We compost our own on a regular basis. Wish more people would do that. And usually, we figure out ways to maybe give people an incentive to do that in each of their properties. But the other thing is, my understanding, this operation is multiple... We already have a small composting program in the town. My understanding is we can... I didn't even know this until this came out. The one good fit is that I can get a couple buckets of compost from the town now, which I appreciate. I wish I knew that all along, but I didn't. But now I do. But this is multiple times bigger operation. There's no odor right now. I have a very hard time believing in operation of what I understand to be this size. And maybe you can come up with a projection. And we're talking 10 times the current program, 20 times bigger. When I think of tractor-trailers multiple a day, it's hard for me to believe it's not of a major operation.
And that's really why I would like Mr. Kelly here, because he can give it... I will say that I went and visited his site this weekend, although with the water, and that was not pleasant. So I didn't get to go all the way in. But I did visit the site. And it's not as big as you think.
Okay. And the last thing. Is he on a commercial property currently? It's zoned for commercial?
I wouldn't say it is. I don't think that it is. It's in a residential area.
He said it was in a residential area.
You know, my understanding is three-quarters of the current proposal, though, is clearly residential. All three-quarters of the way around, across the street, both sides is residential houses.
So I mean, if, you know, Mr. Kelly can answer our questions. And at that time, as a Board, we can make our decision to whether we rescind or not.
And I am curious about why he's leaving that area.
The owner has decided to do something different with his land. Residents are getting more and more expensive. So I guess that's the desire. All right. Mr. Clement, would you like to come? If we're all done that subject, we can move on to another subject? Come on up.
Okay. Thank you. Again, Don Clement, 5 Thelma Drive. A little while ago, I noticed that one of these streetlights, new streetlights in town was not working. It wasn't functioning. Like this microphone. And so I went through the process. I called to see if I could get the situation addressed. And about a week went by and nothing occurred. So I called again. And I got... Oh, yeah, we're working on it. And still nothing. And then I subsequent calls said, we're working on it, or it's complicated. Well, that was over a month ago. And the streetlight is still not working. It's still not operational. And it's one of the new streetlights, because you can tell what the new streetlights look like. And this is rather unnerving that it's been over a month. And we can't get a simple thing like a streetlight fixed. And this is really critical, as far as I'm concerned, because this particular streetlight is on the intersection of Linden Street and Gary Lane. So it's at an intersection of a street, two streets. And it's... And particularly concerning is that the sidewalk on Linden Street hops from one side of Linden Street to the other at Gary Lane, which means there is a crosswalk right there at that intersection, a crosswalk going across Linden Street, which is not exactly a very quiet street. It's a very busy street. And so I'm concerned that we've really got a safety issue here. And I guess I'm asking the board and the town manager if they can do something to expedite this, to get this streetlight fixed so it works. I mean, it's been over a month, and maybe even longer, but it's been over a month since I've been trying to address it. So I would appreciate anything the board and town manager can do to get this streetlight fixed as soon as possible, before we have something that happens out there, because it's so dark. And it is dark.
I will, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that in response to Don's original question, I did send an email over to Public Works late October, October 25th. And they have reported this issue to Affinity. I know Affinity is going through an inventorying to make sure that the lights that they're changing out are, are in fact, unitil-based streetlights and not a private light. But it is being worked on. And I apologize, we haven't gotten there yet, but we have not, so.
And I don't know, Don, I reported mine at the same time, and I will say that the one that I reported is now working, so it must be something about you.
Kudos to you.
I'm just saying.
Could you report my, could you report this light then?
I will do that for you.
This is not a private light, it's always been a public light. It's always functioned, it's always been there, it's always worked, now it's not working, and we need to get it fixed. It's a safety issue for everyone who travels that area. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes for November, I'm sorry, we don't have any proclamations and recognitions tonight, but we can move on to the approval of the minute, meeting minutes for November 12th. Does anybody have any changes, amendments on these? If not, I...
Madam Chair, if there are no revisions, then I would move to approve the select board meeting minutes from Tuesday, November 12, 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Then we will move on to appointments. We do have a few appointments. We, tonight, we are looking, as part of the Tree City USA, I believe that's called, the, one of the last things that needs to be done is we need to formally appoint Jay Perkins, even though he has been the Tree Warden for a number of years, we need to officially do that. And if, in our motion, we can also ask the town manager to just write a letter acknowledging that to whom it may concern, and Eileen Flockhart said she would take care of that. So if anybody would make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board nominee, Jay Perkins, as Tree Warden for the town of Exeter pursuant to RSA 239:139, and also to have the town manager write a letter to whom it may concern.
To the Department of Natural Resources and Lands.
Of Natural Resources and Lands at the State of New Hampshire for approval.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay. We also have an appointment. We did not interview our Cliff Senate, but we do all know Cliff, because he has been, he was the head of the Rockingham Planning Commission for 30 years, and I think he's probably very well-known in town. And he has asked to be appointed to the Energy Committee. The Energy Committee, we will have a, we have Jordan Dickinson, who has resigned as he is moving out of town. So I believe we have, do we have to acknowledge the resignation and then make the motion?
Do we have his resignation? I'm waiting on an email, but I've had it confirmed.
Okay.
Can we move to accept it without having it in writing?
I...
Well, we can move to remove him from the Energy Committee.
Since he isn't living in Exeter anymore, or is about to move? So.
It's pending, is what I've been told, so. We have asked him for confirmation and writing.
Okay. Do we, is that committee full?
I don't think so, but the next meeting isn't until December anyway. Correct?
Well, it's next week.
Right.
Okay, so we could wait on this until the next week's meeting?
I'll move to, I'll move to appoint Cliff, if we can do that now.
Okay.
But I think we should have Jordan's resignation.
So what I was asking is if that committee is full or not? I'm sorry, I didn't check that.
It is technically full.
Okay. So we'll just wait on that. Excuse me. So we'll move on to discussion and action items. The first one being...
Can I interrupt?
Yes, please.
Just going back to Mr. Clement's second public comment, that does appear to be a safety concern, and I know that's going to be looked into. Can the board get like, a follow-through to make sure that that's been done, so that we know?
So we can have something next week to find out? Yep.
That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
The next one is EMS fund equipment request for the fire department. Chief.
Thank you. Today, I'm here to ask for the board's support for a $10,000, $10,711.76 withdrawal from the EMS revolving fund. This is for a vital piece of equipment for the new ambulance that's being delivered next week. The piece of equipment is a Lucas chest compression system. It's an aid that we've been using, a similar type device now for over 11 years in CPR and cardiac arrest calls. So we've tried this new technology out. We have one in the current first new ambulance, but we need one for the second ambulance, because the other one is expiring. We're not going to be able to use it. We've had really good results with this. The compressions that this device gives us has improved our save rate. During our evaluation, we actually had three patients that were viable when we got them to the hospital, because this automated machine was assisting us with CPR. The other great advantage to having a piece of equipment like this is that it allows the firefighter paramedics to be able to administer drugs and do other things that they need to do to speed the process of treatment to this patient. So I'm here to ask for your support. We've done this in the past, so we're very cautious about taking money out of the fund, only until we really need it. This did not, the last one was actually purchased with the ambulance some three years ago, and now we're just trying to get current with the second truck, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? So you're looking for a motion, and I don't know if you have it in here?
The expenditure would be for $10,711.76, and we have a $4,000 trade-in value of the current piece of equipment that we have. So that'll be the final price after the trade-in.
So the $10,000 is after the $4,000 trade-in?
So do we...
Can I just ask one question? So is the expenditure upfront, chief, going to be $14,000? So are we going to move the number of $14,000 with the $4,000 trade-in? I just want to make sure I get the motion right.
No, I think, I think that I need a motion for the $10,000.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'll move to approve an expenditure from the EMS revolving fund in the amount of $10,711.76 to procure a second Lucas CPR device, with the understanding that the quote includes a $4,000 trade-in for the existing Zoll CPR device.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Gawacki. He is talking to us about equipment requests for EX TV.
So similar, straightforward request. This is for purchasing new and sort of upgrading equipment that we currently are using over in the town hall for like filming public access shows. So we recently did this a couple months ago for the Novak Room, and we really like the new audio mixer that we have in there. And so basically, we're getting very similar system, but for across the street, so that we can use that on the, now we have four reoccurring, like regularly filming, public access shows with citizens and all the stuff we film. So this is going to allow us to do a lot more shows easier with, without having to kind of MacGyver different setups for different audio things, so. There's, I think I sent you guys the explanation and the quote we got. So this is a local vendor that we work with, and they're really responsive when we need help and had a good price for everything, so that's why we picked them. I could talk about any of the items on the quote, if you want me to break it down, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
And this isn't something that you're going to be using at the library? You had talked about that.
No, yeah, that's something else. And we'll be, we're working on getting the, we're working with the same vendor to get a quote for that and some other vendors. That's going to be, in case some of you don't know, we're working with the library to make like a podcasting audio recording room, because a lot of that equipment isn't really accessible to everybody, because it's kind of expensive. So we'll probably come before you guys in, you know, a month or so, and we're looking at around $5,000 for that. And it's just a computer and some microphones, kind of like, so people could do anything from their own like radio podcast, to maybe go in and play in GarageBand and compose music. So all that stuff could be given to the station for music and content as well. So it's kind of working for the library and for us, so. This is for, this stuff will be going in the town hall, but most of it's mounted on like a rack with wheels, so we can bring that somewhere else if we need it to.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Seeing you want to do another motion then? Nico?
Sure, this is coming out of the Cable TV Fund?
Yep, out of the Cable TV Fund.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve a purchase of equipment from WHB Concert and Production Services LLC in the amount of $7,817.29 to be expended out of the Cable TV Fund for audio equipment.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you. And then really quick, while I'm in front of you guys, I sent you an email that I also sent to Russ, just to keep you updated, that there's still ongoing stuff with, the FCC recently made a decision, which could impact the way we are getting franchise fees and how kind of our relationship with our cable provider, which is Comcast is. So I'm on the board of the New Hampshire Coalition for Community Media, which is like all of our stations across the state. So we're watching this closely, and there's, it's in effect now, the order, so any day they could start billing us for various things, which are outlined in the email that I sent you. But right now, we're not foreseeing anything happening anytime soon, because just that we don't really know what's going to happen, Comcast doesn't really have a plan for what they want to bill us for, if anything. So I just want to let you know that we're staying up to date. If anyone has more questions about that or concerns, I'm happy to, you know, get someone, maybe another station manager who's really been in contact with this whole thing, because we have national reps and also our whole national, like, our senators and representatives in Washington DC are tuned into this and keeping our interests at the forefront with this. So it's probably going to be something handled nationally, but just wanted to keep you guys in the loop, so.
When you're here, please, please let us know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We also have a communication from our attorney that deals with our cable franchise agreement, and the same thing is, the same information has come to us with a little bit more detail. One of the things I understand is that this decision, executive order, has been challenged, and so it's still in court, which means that nothing can happen to our franchise fee while that's pending. So just for the education of the board and the public, when that decision is made, then we really don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, from my understanding, there suits like so many cities, but also organizations like the National League of Cities, which is some of the info I sent you. And there's the Alliance for Community Media, which is the national group of these stations and producers. So there's a lot of people who have, you know, tried to put stays, and I don't know all the legal terms, but they're fighting it at every step they can, basically. So I don't think we have to worry about anything in the long term, but it's definitely something to be prepared for in case it happens, you know, in a month or a year or whatever, so.
And really quickly, I'd just like to issue preemptive support about having podcasts for equipment at the library. I think it's a really important component of how entrepreneurship is happening around the state and especially in our town, so I'm really excited to see that happening.
Totally, yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, it's a valuable skill for kids and adults to learn alike, so it's, we're happy to work on that project, so. More on that soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, next is Salem Street Area Design Engineering Contract Recommendation from DPW. Did you want to speak on this, Russ?
I will. Jennifer is actually ill and could not attend today, so I'll take it for her. This is the, March 2019, there was a Warren article approved for $325,000 for design and engineering of the Salem Street area. So that's a water sewer and drainage improvement project. It's been in our capital improvement program for a number of years. And the Public Works Department went through a process of issuing an RFP and went through their qualifications-based selection process, and, which is an evaluation based on quality of the proposal, and then they solicit cost proposals after that. So they received eight proposals, and the list of all the proponents are in the packet, so if anybody wants to see them, they can certainly review that. They're recommending, after their process, that the firm of Hoyle Tanner and Associates be awarded the contract in the amount of $315,000, and that's a negotiated fee after the reviewing the proposals and making them the top determinant. And they, this represents approximately 7% of the anticipated construction costs, so it's a pretty small amount, actually, compared to some other projects. If you remember, Hoyle Tanner did our, recently did a string bridge, our string bridge rehabilitation project for the town, did a very good job with that, so. That is the recommendation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that?
The only quick question I had, thank you, Madam Chair, was the part of the proposal where they talk about approving the, even though they picked one, they want to pre-qualify the other eight consulting firms, which most are familiar to me, and we're certainly happy with their work, but are we familiar enough with every one of those that we would do that? I just wanted to make sure we're not just approving a group.
I was actually intending to save that for another night, when Ms. Perry could be here and talk you through that process.
Oh, that'd be great.
Qualification.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Ann? About, for the Hoyle Tanner...
You sure what?
Approving the design contract?
I will make a motion to approve the design contract for the Salem Street utility... See, my thing is sort of cut off, I can't read it.
Salem Street Area Utility Design?
Design Project to Hoyle Tanner and Associates for $315,000.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Next, we will move on to...
Oh, Madam Chair...
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Could I get your authorization to sign the agreement?
Okay. All right, so you want to do a motion on that? Or should we, do you want to just...
I can make a separate motion, sure.
Yeah, could you do that?
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign any documentation in regard to the design contract for Salem Street Area Utilities Design Project to Hoyle Tanner and Associates for $315,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Move to, just going to scroll down. So our next discussion is Swayze Parkway Rules and Permits Discussion. So this was brought up under permits and approvals last time, and this is intended to have a discussion. We're not making any decisions tonight, because I feel like what we need to do is send this back to, for language to be put together, so that then the next time that we meet, we can, we can get more details. And I hope that is, I just felt like we should have a discussion first. Last time was kind of a preliminary discussion. I will say that I went to the Swayze Parkway trustees' meeting, and we discussed it, and came away with some... we discussed it, um, and, uh, came away with, um, some thoughts. One of them, and I know that Molly will like this, um, is that we felt, um, they felt that having, uh, Swayze Parkway Trust, uh, open, open but not open to cars at least once a month during the season would be a nice idea, um, and wouldn't require anything more than, um, shutting the, um, street off and possibly buying a sign that says, and getting the word out that says, you know, uh, open to, um, pleasure vehicles. And I don't mean motorized pleasure vehicles and skateboards and things like that. And nothing formal. Um, the other discussion was that, um, you know, uh, that in fact, when we look at our, um, rules for, uh, Swayze, that, um, when you go down to the seasonal, I think, you know, we had a discussion that seasonal, just really what's the definition of that? And my suggestion would be to, let's just, um, have a separate line item for the farmer's market. Um, and this is up for discussion. Um, so, because that's, I think, was our intention, was the multiple vendors seasonal, uh, the farmer's market was a $1,200, um, item, uh, fee for the season. That being said, we also discussed that, um, that, uh, a, someone doing an event, that there should be, um, a, um, number put on that. And that the feeling of the trustees was that, um, once a month may be the limit for a, a vendor to use that or a party to use that. Um, now, um, and, and really taking out that seasonal and, and making a better explanation for it. And I think that's what we need to do. Um, uh, I do have some other notes that I just have to grab. But, um, we can start with that discussion. Um, let me just get to my notes here. Um, and I kind of threw those out at, um, Greg and also, um, at, um, Bisan and Melissa. Uh, and we've kind of been going back and forth with those. Um, but, um, the, um, let's see, uh, season. Um, and then we also had the discussion of the for-profits. We do not separate them from, by resident or non-resident with different fees, but yet we do that with everything else. Um, so that was another, uh, question that we had, um, there. Um, we also were gonna have this discussion, not just on Swayze, but also we were gonna kind of work on the, um, campaign. So we'll start with the things that I've talked about and maybe get everybody's thoughts and then send it out to the public as well. So, um, does anybody wanna start or have questions or discussion points?
I have a question on the seasonal. Maybe we can start with this.
Yeah.
Cause what, maybe take a step back. What was the original, where seasonal came from, I believe, was with the farmer's market to begin with?
Right.
That they were the first kind of, cause they were there every week and they needed to come up with a form of payment for that.
Right.
So I think the season, not saying that that is determining what the season is, but I think the season would be, you know, your spring, summer, fall, your, your good weather seasons. I mean, you can almost make it somewhat similar to that. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel on this, cause I think it's, we might be making this a little more complicated than we need to.
Right.
And then the other notion was probably someone or some group that's there once a month as opposed to once a week. How do we handle that in terms of a season?
Right.
And I thi, I think that's where some of the background was on the, the fees that ended up coming up.
Right.
When the, when that group would vote on those things. I mean, that was their discretion to try to figure that kind of thing out.
Mm-hmm.
That was my understanding from the time that I was involved with that. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out to say, we need a starting point. So if the seasonal one came from the farmer's market, that was, that's what that was. That is how that was determined.
Right. So why do we have to, the farmer's market is the farmer's market. It's, I, I just think that we should just show that the farmer's market is a, if, is a $1,200, you know, uh, fee. And now let's separate that out. And now let's get to, do we take seasonal out and do we, uh, say months instead?
Just say monthly.
Monthly.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Right?
I'm just trying to get.
That might, that might, yes.
That's mine too. I mean, I'm just trying to get the conversation going and figure what we're trying to drive out.
Right.
What we're trying to define.
Okay.
A little, little history.
When they were adopted.
All right.
So the other thing too about the farmer's market is, is that most of the other things we've discussed have been weekends. And the farmer's market's during the week, number one. Number two, I agree with you, the farmer's market's the farmer's market. It's, no pun intended, apples and oranges or tomatoes and cucumbers. It's, it's different than what the, the others. But I mean, so, um, but I had a problem the last time we, we discussed this with the word seasonal and what that meant. Um, and then, and then beyond that, you know, working with all the parties and the trustees to determine, you know, if we're gonna allow a, a single vendor, a multiple vendor to have multiple dates, do we cap those dates? The number of dates, number one, do we cap those dates? And if so, it, it needs to be consistent throughout for, for everybody. Um, and that was, um, you know, one of the concerns I had. And, and not singling out anybody or any organization. It just needs to be, I think it just needs to be consistent throughout. And we need to work on that. We need to talk through that, I think. Still.
Right. Exactly. I, I just shared with you, okay, modern technology, I just shared with you, uh, the notes that Greg and I have been kind of going back and forth on so that we're all on the same page. Um, and then we will make those, I, Russ has them, so we can also post those as well. Um, so, yes, um...
Fortunately, I don't know how to do that.
You go to your drive.
Okay.
So you have to go to your.
I'll find it. I'll keep going. I'll find it. I'll find it.
Jeez.
Molly, I might need some help.
I'm here for you.
Here we go. I got it.
Okay, you got it. Um, Julie, do you have any comments, ideas? Um, you know, do we, the single user using it only, uh, once a month, do, and we do have with our, um, I know the town hall, it's four times is, constitutes another, um, application as well?
Right.
Right.
And what I was wondering is the, um, app, that application has been used for a single entity to reserve the whole year on, with applying all in one day, as opposed to applying for a month and then in three weeks applying for the next four months. Um, and so we should consider that rather than, um, some one, um, uh, reserving a whole year on one permit day for the, for Parks and Rec. It used to be the Selectman, but now it's Parks and Rec. Um, the other thing I'm thinking about in consideration of the word seasonal is, does this idea of applying, uh, you know, every three weeks or every four weeks for another set of days, does that apply to the farmer's market also? And I would say if we're gonna be equal, then yes, it would. Um, but, you know, then that changes the cost of what seasonal means. So would we change the price of a, a four-unit application, uh, to be, you know, a fourth of, you know, 25% of what we have here? So that the seasonal definition comes out almost the same, because we haven't defined what seasonal is. But if it's six weeks or twelve, or, um, four months or solstice to solstice or whatever, um, we wanna make it the same for everything. And we're sort of basing our decisions on a traditional farmer's market thing, but we really do have to make it the same for users that come along, because we might have something that also wants to be every week for a number of weeks. Um, the farmer's market has to, happens to be during, during the week on Thursdays as opposed to weekends. But that's, you know, is there a, a separate action for that? You know, is this a four times or, you know, six times on a Saturday or six times on a Sunday, given that people are talking about, um, having a day closed off for families to just enjoy the parkway without any, uh, uh, the intrusion of, uh, vehicles. So it's safe enjoyment and there's, you know, pavement and grass and you can ride your bikes and skateboards and scooters or whatever. Um, so I think we need a little bit more discussion or thought about what is seasonal. You know, and using the farmer's market as a base is, I just don't know. I can't, I can't decide if that's the right thing to do. It's, everybody wants it. Everybody likes it. They have come in for one application for whatever months they use it. But is that the same for anybody that would like to do, uh, an event that would benefit the town and be attractive to the residents, um, on a, on a weekly basis? So I'm a little not, not settled yet.
Um, I don't, I don't know. I, I just assume that the farmer's market is a, is a different type of thing, because it's, um, local farmers. I, I don't know. I, I haven't worked that one out, but.
Yeah, local is, you know, depends on your definition.
I, yeah.
The, uh, no impact man said it was 50 miles, a 50-mile radius. So, you know, that doesn't, that goes outside of Exeter. So, you know, multi-vendors from wherever, uh, you know, Exeter-based organization, you know?
I also think there, there's a big difference between a weekend versus a, a weekday afternoon.
Yeah. I'd agree.
From two to five.
Right.
Right. You're right. That's limited hours.
It's, yeah.
Compared to a whole day event. So that's.
Or even, I mean, or even a weekend event.
Right.
Where, you know, where there's, there's more room for variety.
Right. So it sounds like we need to look at the more, I don't know, if we're making like miniscule.
I know.
Options. I, you know, I'd really like not to have eight different explanations of what a group does. Um, so I, I am not settled on, you know, we've already talked about, we need a definition of seasonal. Um, but none of us have come up with what that is. And it's very difficult. And we might wanna look into what other, I know another town has looked at us and said, curse you Exeter for giving that farmer's market the right to be there every week. And with, with a fee even.
Why? Because they want it?
Because another group wants to come in, or, well, with more the, that here in Exeter are the group that, um, organizes it as a, an alliance, a seacoast alliance of farmer's markets where this one in this other town just wanted, or people were applying to use it as a farmer's market, but it was individuals.
I see.
So.
So cursed. There's something that else that this discussion brings up for me. And that, um, we had talked a little bit ago, and I mean, truly, I have no idea when this actually came up. But during the whole arts committee stuff that happened, we had talked about having a broader sort of cultural mission, um, or group or organization that sort of looked at what we want to promote in our town. And I'm wondering, and maybe, maybe the answer is, we haven't done anything with it. But, um, maybe this is.
I have.
You have? Okay.
I actually have something written and it's sitting on my desk and I'm waiting for an opportunity to present it to all of you. We've had other, um...
Okay.
Matters.
Yes.
But that was one of the first things I said.
Yep.
When we set our, our goals and objectives back in April. That was one of mine. And I do have something, um, ready to go for all of you to...
So I, I mean, I would be very interested in entertaining that discussion as well, because I think that our master plan does a really good job of talking about open space and economic development and where we want our town to go in sort, in terms of population and all of these other things. But we've really, um, we don't quite have a place for what arts and culture and what different groups should be having the use of space. So I would be really interested to, I remember that was part of your goals. Um, but I would be really interested in, in a broader discussion that includes discussion about that.
Madam Chair, I have a question on the...
Yes.
I think it's, that's a good point. That's a great point. Um, but this, this sort of on the topic at hand, which we're struggling with a little bit, I have two, two things that have come to mind for me. One is the fee structure, which is totally what we're really responsible for here. But use, to me, isn't necessarily our purview, the use of what goes on there. And I'm not trying to split hairs, but that would almost go back to the trustees. So if they wanna be involved in something, cause we can throw a number out to whatever the fee needs to be, but in terms of what the uses are, isn't that the kind of thing that would be in the purview of the trustees that are running the parkway?
Except for it was, uh, given back to us.
It was given back to us.
Right. And, and their, their job is to maintain the.
I'm making a part, I'm making a.
Parkway.
Right. But I'm also, what was given to us is permitting. But wouldn't you involve them with what the items, the people that wanna be there, is what I'm saying? The use of the parkway? Wouldn't that also, I know we're gonna approve or disapprove the fees and the permitting, but don't they get a level of input? Since we're having a discussion.
Well, and, and that's why I did go to them and we did have a discussion. Um, but it's ultimately our, our decision of what we do. But I did include them and that, and that's what I came back with, that, you know, their, their discussion. And they would, and, and ultimately they would like to know who's using the parkway. Um, just keeping, just, you know, letting, uh, having some communication between the, um, Parks and Rec and them as far as when there are, um, events happening. So, um, but other than that, it comes to us, as far as I'm, I understand. Um, so I, and I, you know, there, there's a lot of things to discuss here. Um, you know, um, let's, even, you know, if we look at the multiple vendor seasonal, more than 50, $1,200, well, what if, what is, again, we're gonna come back to seasonal. Is that three events? Is that four events? Is that two events? I think we have to define that.
I think.
I, I don't feel like we can, we have to say for-profit, uh, resident and for-profit non-resident, because we also have, um, that stipulation of, um, the, the one month, the resident getting the ex, you know, the extra month hop on, um, the, the venue. So, um, so there, there are lots of discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna just throw this out there for everyone to think about for the next time we discuss this. But instead of seasonal, uh, we have one-day event. So why don't we make it units and have four units? It might be four days in a row. It might be four Saturdays, but that's something to be, you know, a deciding factor on the application. Um, that would get us away from, you know, spring, summer, fall, Wendy decide those begin and end. Um, you know, it's, you know, September 1st or whatever, just the number of.
Events.
The number of.
Or uses.
Yeah. Well, the num, yeah, the number, yeah. The number of units it's gonna be used. I like, I, sometimes it's a four-day event.
Oh, you're saying, okay. So a unit could be a four-day event.
Or a day. A, a unit could be a day. We have one-day events, that's one unit. So four units would be four days, whether it's contiguous or.
I gotcha.
You know, every Saturday for four Saturdays.
Got you. Okay. Um, would you like me to, are you guys wanna hear from the audience now?
Yes.
Cause we do have people, which is always fun. So, um, just come up and state your name and, uh, where you live and let us know what you'd like to talk about. Any questions or comments on what we're discussing? We'd love your input.
This guy looks ready.
Hi, Scott Cookler. I'm 12 Clifford Street in Exeter. And, uh, I don't have a dog in the fight with this. I'm not a vendor. I'm not an organizer. I'm friends with some organizers and vendors. And, uh, but I've lived here for 15 years. I love this town. I chose this town out of all the seacoast here because I thought it was a really nice place to live. And one of the things that I really enjoy doing on my weekends is going down to Swayze Parkway. And I especially like it if there's something happening. And the thing is, is that I... And the thing is, is that I don't care whether the people organizing things are Exeter residents or non-residents or whatever, and I honestly don't think that we should consider it as a revenue source, you know? I think the Swayze Parkway and the events that happen there are an amenity to the town and it's what makes living in town a pleasant thing. And what happens is restrictions to vendors who are willing to organize and put on events becoming more and more draconian, more and more expensive is going to prevent people from doing so. And for me, as a resident who enjoys going down to the Swayze Parkway and having something happen there, it would be, I think, to our benefit to open up the possibility that people are willing to do it, and I think these vendors, you know, they're not making a killing doing this, nobody's paying their mortgage by doing this. I think that they should be considered sort of a volunteer of setting these events up and we should really thank them for organizing and presenting or putting things together that make things actually happen in our town. And I don't believe any of the events, other than maybe the Beer Festival, prevent anybody from using the rest of the park for any event, you know, for going for a stroll or playing with their kids or whatever. And I'm for having more of these things and opening up restrictions for these vendors to do what they need to do in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just say that we are aware, sure, we'd like to have Swayze Parkway used every weekend, but I don't think that the people that live on Swayze Parkway would like to have it happen every weekend. And so where there's a fine line that we lead, when we open up the parkway every single weekend to a festival or something.
No, I understand that.
So we just have to be careful with that.
That's true, but, I mean, the events that I'm talking about, I mean, the Beer Festival, it's crazy.
Yeah, we couldn't do that, we couldn't do something like that every weekend.
But anything in that street there, it's non-invasive, it's not, you know, and I'm sorry, if you have to drive 100 yards out of the way to make it around, that you can't drive through Swayze Parkway, maybe that inconveniences somebody for a minute, but I don't think that we're asking for rowdy, like, rock concerts every weekend. I'm talking about family-friendly events where people come and there's activity in the park.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm Andrea Burzon, 305 Water Street, and I'm in a unique position because I'm a business owner on Water Street, I'm Florence's neighbor, but I'm also a resident on the parkway. My house butts the parkway, actually. And I, just a week ago, found out that Swayze was going to be done away with the Swag on Swayze, I should say, the flea market, and at the same time, I found out that there was a proposal...
It's not going to be done away with?
Well, this is what I heard from customers and...
Well, okay, because we, this is, the discussion is not doing away with anything.
No, I'm just...
The discussion is making it fair to all.
Right, I understand that. I'm just stating, that's why I'm here, because a week ago, this came to me and I was like, what? And at the same time, I had heard about the proposal to do the parking meters and I wrote to people in Town Hall saying, no, this can't be because, you know, our businesses are already struggling to take away the, the flea market would be terrible. I mean, there's so many new people that come to town because of it and, and events at the park affect me both as a businessperson and as a resident. I mean, I have to listen to all the concerts and look at people sitting in my backyard pretty much, you know? So I have two views, you know, but I'm very concerned about making it so difficult, like he said, for people to use it in a way that brings business and revenue into the town. And as a business, that's what I've experienced and I'm sorry that none of my customers or other fellow business owners are not here because that's what I hear every day, you know, what, what are they doing now to, you know, anyway?
I'm not going to talk about the parking, but I think that people have a wrong impression about what we're trying to do, so I will leave it at that, because it's not up for discussion tonight. But I think sometimes people have to have more faith in us, that we're looking at things in a holistic manner and, and I'm sorry that people just jumped to conclusions, to be honest. It's frustrating for us because we devote many hours to this and I'm not sure sometimes why.
Well, or they should listen to the videos. I mean, when you look at the videos, you can see that you guys are really trying to look at both sides and that's admirable, yes, I agree. They should look at the videos before they go out and get all worried. But having said that, I just wanted to make sure that you knew from the business owner's perspectives...
Mm-hmm, no.
That it's really a worthwhile thing. I mean, many things are at the park, obviously, some more than others. I mean, you know, the UFO thing doesn't really do anything for us or the Beer Festival doesn't do anything for us because they're just drinking beer, they're not buying anything. They're not coming in and, you know...
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Do you mind? I mean, and for, sort of, this is an open, an open question, but, and I completely echo both of what you've said about how a vibrant downtown with things going on, I mean, that's what attracted me to this town as well. I just actually posted an article on my social media channels about how, you know, New Hampshire needs more boomerangs, and a boomerang is somebody who grew up here and, you know, comes back here to raise a family. But the thing that's striking me that I'm not understanding is how are we making it difficult? I mean, that's the thing that I don't understand. There are, you know, some discussions that are happening and, you know, unfortunately, we're having to have them. I don't think that we are the right venue to have these discussions about what should be where and who should have how much time, but I don't understand how the permitting process is difficult. And I especially don't understand, I mean, I agree, we shouldn't be making money off of this, but there's things that we need to upkeep like park benches and, you know, mowing and all of this sort of stuff that goes into having public spaces that are used by a number of people, so I just don't understand...
Well, I can answer that.
That would be great.
Sure. The way I heard it is, why, you know, I asked, why are they getting, why are they getting rid of Swag on Swayze when it's so helpful for us, for people like us? And they said, well, they more than doubled the price. Now, after having seen the video of the meetings, of your meeting actually, Florence, with the trustees of the parkway, it all became much clearer, there's a reason for that and whatever, you know, there's all kinds of reasons, but that's what the people out there are hearing, you know, they're just hearing...
I know.
They're doubling the price and therefore forcing people not to have the flea market anymore.
But I think this, Molly, if I may, this conversation's not about one event or, you know, one organization that has an event. This is a global discussion about the events that are happening, and I don't think that, at least from a board's point of view, nobody has gotten rid of anything. Nobody's trying to make any money from this, but there have to be fees that are charged for the upkeep, whether it's for the parkway, whether it's for the Town Hall. I mean, it's certainly not a, you know, a revenue, you know, cash cow for the town, but we do need to charge, and I think that it's only fair to have a different fee for an Exeter resident versus a non-Exeter resident, and I think it's also fair to have a different fee for a nonprofit versus a profit. So I'd like to, I mean, I think this conversation needs to be globally, not just one event or, you know, what you may have heard, and I think it goes back to public comment. It's great that we had a full room today and a lot of what people have heard hasn't been what's gone on in this room and there's a lot of misinformation, so I hope that people use this as an example to start coming to our meetings.
I agree, by the way, about the fees, I totally agree. It's just that I'm trying to portray the understanding that I'm getting from other customers and from other people that I work with...
Understood.
That, you know, if you're going to raise the fees on something that's so good, you're kind of pushing them away.
And I think that is why we're having the discussion, because we want to make sure that, first of all, that the parkway's being used and does it need to be used five times? Does it need to be used one time a month by one particular organization? We have never had, we're lucky to be able to have this conversation, to be able to have a conversation that Swayze Parkway is that popular. Probably five years ago, there was hardly anything on Swayze Parkway, but at the same time, it has to be equitable and it also can't be every weekend. I, you know, I think the parkway is also for people to be able to enjoy it as a park.
Right. And as a resident, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I think one of our struggles here is just making it equitable.
Exactly, and it's really hard.
That's what we're really trying to get to.
Right.
And, you know, the fees, as they've been set, have been set. We haven't changed them, it's, now we're trying to refine it to make it, like I said, equitable and maybe if we change one thing, we're going to have to change how that affects the cost. So if we change it to have, a user can have an application for four units, might be all Saturdays, there's one price and it's not the $1,200, it's, you know, a quarter of the $1,200 or whatever, so that, you know, somehow the aggregation is not unbearable, I guess, I can't think of the word I really mean, but...
Right, right.
Hi, Scott Ruffner, 11 Halp, based in Exeter. I would just encourage you guys, before when the permits were being overseen by the trustees and by you, there were discussions about the different events, and so now that the Parks and Rec is doing it, you know, they're doing it from an administrative standpoint, but there's really no discussion over curation, if you will, or competing events. And so we were in a situation where this past year for our Fall Festival, we always do the same Saturday, but then there was a Exeter Arts and Crafts Festival permitted the Saturday before ours, which they were somewhat similar events, and so that was something that created some confusion with vendors that were, you know, potentially involved in both and were thinking this was this and this was that. So I want, you know, things to be accessible for everybody, but I think there does need to be some sort of oversight of some kind where there's a discussion happening when, if multiple applications are coming in to make sure that things aren't potentially on top of each other or there's some sort of distance in between them if they're similar in nature, just for everybody's sake too, from a marketing standpoint and getting the word out type thing.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I appreciate that, but that's getting into the micromanagement of who wants to use the park. I'm not going to make any motion for similar uses, can't use the park in consecutive days, that's just, that's not like First Amendment right.
I just have a quick question, just, it might help people since not everybody can see what it is, so if I'm a nonprofit as an example, just to make sure I'm looking at this, or, I don't care if I'm a nonprofit or not, but just to get a number, $150 if I have a nonprofit one-day event, right? Is that where we start?
Yep, resident.
Resident. So if I have that event four times, or let's say, once a month for six months, five months, so that I'm paying 150 times six, I mean, under the current thing, for each time I...
Right.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about changing because some organizations want to have four days.
And you might want to give them a break? I don't know.
So we could buy four, get one free, I'm just saying, just make it simple.
Right, well, exactly, and to this gentleman's point that I think he made earlier, I would like to make it less expensive as opposed to more expensive because I am, and way back when, when we started the town fees, I was sort of the one person that didn't care if they were resident, non-resident either, and, you know, just want them to come and, you know, use the facility and, you know, do some cool stuff for the town. So that's the key, I think that's the net of what's going on here, you just want, you don't want to make it cost prohibitive for people to come here, for these organizations, entertainment, whatever, to be on the parkway, because if we charge too much, then lose everybody, so that, and we all, you know, extra...
And actually, when we changed the fees, we, we actually did, we upped the number of people, if you'll remember, so like the one-day event was up to 50 people instead of, I think it was up to like 20 people. So that, I think, made it more equitable. For a one-day resident event is $75, that's, you know, I think that just a simple, I mean, some of these events, they're big enough that the police need to come by, that costs us money. You know, we don't, might not see it, but we, as a town, do absorb that, so, yes.
Just one more point, as far as being an Exeter resident, it doesn't matter to me as a benefit whether the person who's holding the event's an Exeter resident or a non-resident, the benefit to the community is the same. And like for an event like Swag on Swayze, it has minimum impact on the residents in the area and on the grounds itself because they're mostly on the asphalt, there isn't going to be any more like traffic over grass, grassy areas than, you know, like would have happened during like the Beer Festival or whatever. It doesn't require more upkeep than that. So to me, I feel like that the fee should be nominal and I think that there should, that there should be more things going on, that's all.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I just have one other thing, I mean, we're looking at changing this fee schedule and we've done some edits already, nonprofit versus for-profit. We changed the up to 50 people or more than 50 people, but we haven't combined them because we still have, you know, two nonprofits, resident organizations, there's two different prices, so that's, part of our goal is to look at why those were different so we can make them get rid of one, you know, why is it 150 or 75?
So, why is it...
Well, the first two on the list are nonprofit one-day events for resident organizations and the number of people, oh, I'm sorry.
It goes up.
One is up to 15, one is more than that.
Yeah, exactly.
Never mind.
So what I see this is, so I think we've had a really good discussion, we could discuss this all night. What I would love to do is get maybe two, because that's all we can get, is two select people, to sit down with Melissa and Greg and come up with kind of a synopsis of what we talked about tonight and then bring it back to us on the 16th. We're going to have a lot to do on the 16th.
I'll volunteer.
In your pajamas. Now, you'll volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
I don't know if anybody else would like to volunteer to do that?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, Julie? Or, Anne, are you...
Yeah, what?
Can...
Flip a coin.
Okay. Anne, why don't I have Anne and Nico work with them, if you guys can do that, and come up with something for our 16th meeting, and then, and then we can come back so that we can talk this through by then.
And Madam Chair, the other thing I'd recommend is that we, in reviewing this, look at what we've passed on the other town facilities because I don't want to look at this in a vacuum.
No, no, and actually...
Although they're very different activities, being outdoors versus indoors, you know, it's got to be the same kind of ratio, I think.
Right, you'll see in the notes that I sent you, there are some other things to think about as well. We also discussed, and I hadn't brought this up, but we did have our first presidential candidate comment, was about to come to Swayze and we don't have that in Swayze, so we'd like to bring that to Swayze as well. And then, let's see, we have some other things that Greg and Melissa have thought about and I'll just briefly talk them through so that the audience can hear what we're talking about. We have noticed that the fee, some of the presidential, the lesser presidential candidates have not been able to... have not been able to pay our $1,500 fee for coming. So that's a discussion to have as well. Do we need more people to do that, to, you know, do we need to talk about that a little bit? Maybe we, and we know that that's a short-lived thing because we're, you know, by February, nobody, nobody's coming to see us. So.
Not necessarily true.
Okay, once in a while they'll come after that. But after the primary, they, they seem to, they're busy in other states. So, and then, we do need, there are other comments like on Swayze, other fees need to be adjusted or examined. As mentioned, the for-profit fee for a one day is $250 event is cheaper than the nonprofit non-resident one day fee of $300. So we need to look at that. And this is always, since, you know, I always say that every six months we have to look at these things, so we need to, to look there. And there, I like Julie's comment about units because I know that there are organizations that might do two units a year. And so do those two units constitute a lesser fee for the second one?
That's why we have to look at what we.
I would like to.
Because we struggled with that at the same time when we were doing that.
Yeah. So I'd like, I'd like you to look at that too.
You end up changing more than just the Swayze fees again.
Yep. And then, let's see, they have some other things like, so I'm going to just, I guess there's other online facility calendar. I would love to see that. That's another thing that they're talking about.
Been asking for it for years.
Yeah, I'd love to, I know that other towns have it, so it'd be nice.
And you sent, you sent this to us?
Yeah. So we can, if you guys can work on this, this would be great. And then come back to us on the 16th if that.
All the things IT asked me to do is completely frozen my screens. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, it's all here. It's all here.
You flicked on update.
Paper notes. Yes. Yeah, don't update your computer before a meeting, I guess.
I did it this morning.
Never listen to Andy. Okay. So yours too? Russ, is yours working all right? Because I know you just updated.
It's, it's plugging along here.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the public at all? So we will see you back here on the 16th. Okay? All right. So seeing, so we can move on from that and Nico and Anne can.
And you know, Madam Chair, may I, if I may?
Yes.
I really do, and I know that I talked about this in the spring, I, and it kind of falls into this. At some point, I'd like to be able to present what I've, to the board, what I've put together. We have the budget season coming up and we already have a list, I'm counting, of like four things that we'd need to resolve, including this. So at some point, we have to.
So maybe the, we could, we could discuss that like at the end of January, maybe?
I'd love to.
Okay. We'll put that on your, your list.
Okay.
Okay. We have been busy.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to, if I can get back to that page.
I'm going to look on from here.
Okay. You can look on with me.
She's Julie's closer.
Okay, we're back to that. Next on the agenda, permits.
Permits.
Yep. So we're permitting processing.
Florence, I think you left your hat.
Okay, so we have permits. We have two permits that need to look at because there is alcohol involved. We have the Prescott, so we're, we're at, we don't have any tax abatements, veterans credits or exemptions, correct?
Right.
Russ? Permits and approvals. We have the Prescott Parks Arts Festival and Winter Show at the Exeter Town Hall. That's 1114 to 1223.
Is that already happening or is that next year?
That's this year. And how, I don't know how this is in front of us when it's.
It's already happening.
Oh, I see. So wait, go down to, that, they are using, right now, they're using the, it's 1213, 1214, 1220 and 1221, I believe. Is that right, Russ? So these, this is just the same, let me just make sure because I don't know that.
Is there like rehearsal and then show?
I believe this is, it's the festival winter show. Yeah, this is.
Right, this is the whole application, meaning the event application.
Oh, that's liquor there.
Okay, and then this special one day malt wine is just for those four days? It's a beer and wine and it's $25 a ticket. I'm just concerned we're not going to.
What is that month before?
That's, they are using the stage for, I believe.
Rehearsals.
Rehearsals.
Are those all consecutive days?
See, and that's another question. If you looked at the, oh, you couldn't.
No, no, I was just going to say that while I'm looking on.
Yeah, the discussion, that was another discussion that with the fees and the town hall use, we'd like to keep rehearsals only the two weeks before. So that will be something you're working on.
So I'm.
I wasn't concerned, I'm sorry, I wasn't concerned so much about the fees, it's just, you know, it kind of prohibits anybody else from using the.
Exact, that's why, that's why we need to, yeah.
Well, you know, again, I don't have our units, our units in front of us. I don't have our fee schedule in front of me and I'm sorry that I didn't prepare that. But we did have a discussion about not only price difference between rehearsal days versus production days, but also times that there's only like a three or four hour period for rehearsals. So, you know, there may be some overlap for what some people want to do, but you know, there it is. My question here is that it's already gone through Parks and Rec and been approved by them?
For the, for the event?
Yeah.
For the.
And we're just doing the alcohol.
The alcohol is for us.
Good, because then I don't have to discuss those things.
Right. And I just want to make sure we're not doing this outdoor that was done in the springtime that to me was a little bit, didn't really meet the, what, what we understood was going to happen. This is not happening and this, I see they have the, what they're doing as far as a plan here.
Right. If, and Madam Chair, if you want to make that part of the approval, that would certainly be a welcome addition. I mean, I think the, the board can put conditions on this to make sure that you're comfortable that there's nothing outside if you want to do that. You've said it, but.
Yes, because it says the bar will be open pre-show and during intermission only. Drinks will not be shown during the show and nor will the bar be open once the show ends. Okay, so I, does anybody have any other, any questions besides the fact that they are within the, what do you call it, the liquor laws?
Yeah, they've shown everything they need to show us to be.
Right.
Adhering to the state law, which is what we, was our goal when we made the application changes.
Right.
So I'm ready to make a.
Okay, go ahead.
I moved to approve the application of the Portsmouth, or Prescott Park Arts Festival for the use for an alcohol malt and wine license, I'm going to say. One day malt and wine license app, for the dates of 1213, 1214, 1220 and 1221 from the hours of 12:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
Should we say in the town hall? Did it say in the town hall?
Good, good idea.
And yeah, say, that within the town hall only.
Within interior of the town hall.
Very good. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Does, that, that should cover it.
There is no police, I notice they're not having any detail. They did say they don't need a detail.
And the police did approve that.
Yeah.
So, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Excellent.
Okay. Next is the Tonry Christmas Tree Signs at the end of Route 88. These are conditionally approved yearly and Mrs. Tonry is asking, Ms. Tonry is asking if we would approve it from November 28th to December 24th? If they have any trees left on December 24th.
Driven by for so many years, it'd seem weird if it weren't there, right?
Right.
Motion to approve Tonry Tree, because, motion to approve the placing of a Tonry Tree Christmas Tree sign at the end of Hampton, at the crossroad of Hampton and Hampton Falls Road, November 28th through December 24th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next, town mana, oh, right, yes, town manager's report.
Okay, right out of the gate, I will report that Unitil did repair the light at Gary Lane, from what I am told. And it took them three weeks to get the replacement light and that's, that was the delay.
Okay.
So I will check it on my way home, but that came from Jay, our highway superintendent.
There's something about Dawn coming in because every time he comes in, it happens the next day. So I'm, maybe this is pre, because that's.
This one already happened.
Right. And I, the one that I, that I had asked, had, that obviously was within the last day or two, my husband told me, so.
So, solving problems.
Woo-hoo.
Okay, so just a reminder for people that tax bills are due December 9th. And I've had a couple of questions about this, so I'll just pass along that if you're paying by a credit card or debit card, there is a 2.95% processing fee. And just so people know, the town does not get that fee. That is the fee that goes for the processing to be able to take a credit card or a debit card. So we are not benefiting from that. I know.
Can I make a comment? The, that fee also, when you tip your wait person or your server, do it in cash because that fee comes out of their.
Right.
Tip. Anyway.
Total aside.
Good point.
Thanks, Julie. I mean, I'm not kidding, on behalf of servers everywhere.
Thank you.
So tip them in cash.
In cash. Or, or more.
Yes.
Or more, yeah.
So this is another reminder too, that leaf pickup is this week. We are seeing lots of leaf bags on the curb, so they should be out on your regular trash day. And since the town offices are closed Thursday and Friday this week, push everything back a day. So those who usually Thursday would be Friday, those who usually Friday would be Saturday. And yes, so that, that would be the pickup times. So leaf pickup this week. There is an event coming up, Wreaths Across America. We got a note about, out about that today. It is December 14th at noon, so if you could mark your calendars for that, if you're able to attend. I know it's a busy season coming up, so that was another one that was added in. And then next Wednesday, there's a coastal climate meeting. That's over at the Great Bay National Estuarn Center in Greenland. And I think the information on that is in correspondence. So if anybody's interested in going to that resiliency seminar, you're welcome to attend.
I will be there.
You will be?
I've already, I've already, yes, I did, I did.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sort of want to go too, but I'm not sure yet. But I'm glad somebody will be.
I believe Russ is going too, right, Russ? And Bev Tappan is going as well.
Okay.
And we did sign off on the Tree City application today. So just so everybody knows, that is in the queue and on its way. And I wanted to just also congratulate our Blue Hawk football team, the Varsity Boys who played last night in the state championship game in absolutely atrocious weather. They didn't win, but they acquitted themselves more than well. So I just wanted to congratulate them on a great season this year and for giving us all a lot of thrills this year. They're a great group of kids. And then on the personnel front, we have a couple of retirements I'd like to just mention. Steve Toll in our Public Works Department and Jim Pittman in our DPW have both announced that they are retiring shortly after the new year. So if you have a chance to see Steve and Jim, wish them well. And two people who have put in many, many years of great service to the community, so we'll, we'll miss them. This is their time and they're ready to go, so right after the new year.
All right, I need a total for the end of the year.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah. And we do, if, also if you want to mark down, on December 9th, we'll be swearing in our new animal control officer. And we also have an exciting new police officer hire, which is great. A young woman who is coming to us and has some great qualifications and we'll unveil her name at a later date, but December 9th is the swearing in. I think it's at nine in the morning, but I'll just confirm the time for you.
In this room.
In this room. It's exciting times.
Yes.
That was it. That's all I had.
Julie?
Yes. All I had was the Heritage Commission met on Tuesday. We discussed a, or brought, opened a discussion about demolition review and how we can have any consequence for demolitions that occur without a proper process. Pretty much the process is if somebody does that, we warn them that they've done that without going through the proper process. And then it's sort of a beg forgiveness kind of thing. I'm not sure that we can really change it. The other thing was the Subcommittee of the Conservation Commission has a group going or trying to introduce a climate education outreach plan. And what we're working for first is to get, it's sort of an all boards meeting with, these are the topics of climate change or climate adaptation that you should be considering with your board. How does that work with the board next to you? Because we all might have something different that we're concerned about as far as, you know, wetlands or storm surge or big rain events or something like that, but that we're only looking at in our one little funnel of information. So we're looking at one of those all boards meetings, which I really like, but with a particular project or particular topic. And then doing that thing like we did with the master plan where you have breakout groups that talk about something so that we can get the different land use boards to talk to each other about why this is concerning to us or why we don't need to consider that because that's your job, kind of thing. And that's what I have.
Nico?
Okay, the Sustainability Committee met last Monday. Kind of a last minute meeting that they posted. Because the meeting on November 5th, we didn't get through the entire agenda. So it was more or less kind of rehashing the coordinator position again, but also discussion on some other items that they could be working on, including a film festival and potential fair sometime in the spring. And we'll meet again on December 3rd. Let's see what else. The Facilities Committee is meeting this Wednesday. And the Planning Board met on November 21st. There was an application of IS Realty Trust for a proposed subdivision located at 100 Linden Street into five single family lots. And that was tabled for the time being because the applicant needs to go before the concom. And hopefully that will be done in December and then if so, that will come back to the Planning Board in January. But in the meantime, we're going to do a site walk on December 6th of the property. And again, there was just some other administrative things we went through, but there was discussion at the end about attendance, the Planning Board. It's been difficult. We only had five Planning Board members, so we just had a quorum. And Chair Plummer is going to make some phone calls to some people, but that's, I just want to bring that to the board's attention that enough people on the Planning Board brought that up for public discussion. That attendance is not as it should be for, for a board of that, or any committee rather. I mean, should, if you're on it, you should show. Thanks.
Anne? Um, I did not have any meetings. I did want to put a quick shout-out, I meant to mention this at the last meeting. I'm not sure how many people in town are affected, but, um, in my side of town, the, they had to change the trash day. And the only reason I'm mentioning this is I wanted the town manager to send kudos to Waste Management or the folks to, who went out of their way to, I mean, like, double notify people. They had like flyers in doors and mailbox, I mean, they really did a great job to make sure, because you didn't get a whole lot of, I mean, they gave you the notice, and it was the very next week, and everybody did it. I guess that's going forward, the Thursday people went to Wednesday. But they did a great job of notifying, because that's, to me, that's a big deal. I mean, that's, you gotta, that's a real management issue, so I wanted to just shout out to them for that.
I, um, missed my Water and Sewer Advisory Committee meeting because I was in DC at that, um, New Deal Leaders Conference, and it was a really incredible experience. Um, some of the things that I'll bring back are, um, innovative ideas on, and creative approaches. Um, one of the most fascinating pro, uh, conversations that I sat in was how, uh, uh, they're doing recycling in Portland, Oregon of glass bottles, and they're actually selling them back to manufacturers to use, and they've designed this really creative bottle that shows the wear of how many times it's actually been reused. So the fact that it's a, obviously something that's been used before is actually a good thing instead of a, a bad thing. Um, one of the other really creative things that I heard, which I would love to, I mean, I know it's not a local thing, but something to think about in terms of, or, um, Julie, I mentioned this to you, actually. So they had a venture capitalist there, and, um, a proposal that happened in Cincinnati, Ohio to change how, um, how security deposits are, work for renters. Um, and I thought about it in a, a good way to attract young and, and people who are renting to the state. Um, there's something like $46 billion of revenue that's just sort of sitting in bank accounts from landlords. Um, and what this venture capitalist did was he set up an insurance plan, um, so you could pay either your security deposit and pay it all up at, you know, up at, up, um, upfront where the, the landlord can't use it, and then it gets back to you if everything goes well, or you could pay, you know, $2 or $3 per month on your rent. Anyway, it was really interesting.
And they paid the security deposit?
Yeah. And it was, um, it was really fascinating. There were also things that they talked about in terms of, um, entrepreneurship and how to, how to motivate people, you know, sort of tax credits for angel investors and, and all different sorts of creative ways that people are tackling problems all across the country. So I missed Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, I'm sure it went well. Um, and then, uh, Parks and Rec is tomorrow.
That's an interesting topic because the, uh, the, the, uh, security deposit thing, because we did have some legislation in last year, uh, for, to promote first and last, first two months' rent plus last month's rent plus a security deposit.
Insane.
It, it is insane. I mean, what person straight out of college-
Probably prohibitive.
I couldn't even do it.
Right.
It was four months' worth of rent before you could move in.
Instead.
Yeah, exactly. Save down payment, yeah.
Yep. All right, I had, uh, we had a library meeting-
Uh, yes, thank you.
Between now and then, too.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, that was very good because we saw that one of the themes of the, the interior of the library will be to kind of reflect the river. And they'll do that through the ceiling tiles, and also through the, um, paint on the walls and the, uh, carpet.
Carpets, carpet tiles, yeah.
So it'll be obviously reflecting what's out the window, so it's, it's a great idea. Um, they also talked about how, uh, Unitil, the rebates that will be, at least on the HVAC, I believe it was about $7,000 back, but they haven't gotten the, uh, LED lighting yet, I know what that will be. Um, and things are moving right along with that. Um, I did have an HDC meeting. Um, we have the same issue. Um, I'm always worried that there's gonna not be a quorum, and, um, so that, that's an issue and, um, it def, there's definitely lack of enough people on it. So I don't even think there's any alternates.
There are no alternates. Um, if you look at the town's website, there are two people listed who, one resigned and the other we just haven't heard from. And I would like to put a shout-out there that you might think it's scary, you might think you need to be an architect or, you know, designer or something, but we have a really great set of guidelines that are very educational, and you can read them and feel a lot more comfort about what we're looking at as far as changes to historic districts. So I'm just putting it out there for people that care about their historic-
If I can do it, anyone can. Just saying. Um, and I had a Swayze Parkway trustees meeting, um, and they're getting, uh, they're starting to talk about, they did put a, a moratorium on, uh, benches in Swayze Parkway, um, and really want to promote, um, putting together an RFP for, uh, master plan. Um, so I know that they're gonna go and talk with, um, Dave Sharples and Russ about that and how to go about doing that, so that, um, in fact, if somebody wants to give money, uh, for something, uh, hopefully the master plan could have a list of things that need to be done as opposed to another bench. So, um, and, um, obviously we talked about, uh, fees and use of the parkway. Um, also went to a river advisory meeting, which, uh, was interesting. Um, they talked about a couple of different things. Um, uh, mostly Mindy Mesmer did, uh, a presentation on the Water Alliance, as it's called, that she's, uh, um, been working with, and, um, changes to legislation that she's done, um, and, um, regarding the Cookley landfill arsenic in your water and, um, lid paint.
Cancer clusters.
Cancer clusters, yes, she talked about that too. Um, so that was that. Um, so that. And I'm sorry that our next meeting, we will, we do have things on there. Um, so, um, it's not a matter of not having enough to talk about. So, um, but I figured we would have a short meeting tonight and probably a short meeting next week, and then our December 16th meeting would be busy, so, um, and we can always use that on, as we approach the holidays. So I'll go to correspondence. We have a, uh, letter from Gail Granin about, um, supporting the rec department in their, um, quest for a recreation center, which we really, as a board, have not talked about at all. We have a letter, and this is always a good letter, that, um, Jen, uh, clarified some, a couple of things in the CIP discussions that, uh, New Hampshire DES has approved Westside Drive for a $75,000 planning grant. Uh, we have the warrant article, which is $100,000, so that means that we, um, would only be, um, paying for the $25,000. That will still be a warrant article, however, but it will show that, um, we will be getting, uh, three-quarters of it paid for by, uh, DES. Um, the siphons are on the CWR, was SRF 2019 priority list with a 10% forgiveness, so, um, she's checking back for New Hampshire DES because the sewer rate increases occurred after the pre-app was submitted. So this me, Russ, maybe you can give us some, what this entails, that particular-
Yeah, just in terms of how they rate the principal forgiveness factor.
Okay.
Since we raised rates after the pre-app was submitted-
Yep.
Um, we may be eligible for more funding and forgiveness.
Let us just hope for that. Be a nice holiday gift, wouldn't it? Um, also, uh, she said we are also preparing a warrant article for the, uh, wastewater vertical assets pump stations for a $30,000 DES grant, um, which we don't have to match, which is another, so it's great to see the public works and how they do look at ways to, um, cut costs by looking at grants and, um, forgiveness through the state. We do need that. Um, then the, this, um, the next one is the New Hampshire Coastal Climate Summit number eight. Um, and this is Tips, Tools, and Perspectives: Paying for Climate Adaptation and Resilience, and that's the one that's, was, it's the old Seacoast Science Center. No, I'm sorry, it's the Great Bay Natural, National Estuary Research Reserve. What did it used to be called? It used to be called something else.
The Discovery Center.
Thank you, Discovery Center. That, um, this would be the, um, that will be the December 4th, um, seminar. Uh, let's see, this, the next one is Comcast. And I didn't read this, what is this? This says, oh, some prices may increase. This is just, uh, letting us know that they are committed to delivering the entertainment and services that matter most to our customers. Um, and just, uh, clarification on, um, why some prices may increase.
The third page of that is the, are, are the actual price-
Ah, there we go.
Increases.
Yeah, I would take a look at your next bill because, uh, if you don't understand what you're actually paying for, I'm not sure the list of channels really helps you.
Right.
Because it doesn't tell you the number, it just tells you the, the words, yeah.
Okay.
So what's your next bill?
There you go. Um, Holland Company, the next one is from Adams, Massachusetts. They said, "Thanks for, uh, the invitation to bid on chemicals for water treatment," but they aren't offering a quote, but they look forward to, um, future consideration. Uh, and then New Hampshire Municipal Association, this is, um, what is this, Russ? You can let me know.
Telling us what they've done and what they've been going to do.
Right, it's like, uh, it's like a report that reminds, uh, because it comes with their dues for the 2020 year. So what they do is they go through a, a series of bullet points about some of the things they've done this, this particular year, of which there is quite a bit.
I'm excited to see they're bringing back the Wage Salary Survey. They're gonna do that again this year.
Great, okay. Next is American Independence Museum is cordially inviting us to their Holiday Open House and Silent Auction, which is Thursday, December 5th from 6 to 8. Um, and that's in the Folsom Tavern. Um, then we have the Annual Holiday Luncheon and Service Awards on Thursday, December 12th from 12 to 1:30. Um, and that's for the staff, correct, Russ?
Right.
Of the town. And then we have, the next one is, sorry, I don't have these memorized.
And the, and the Holiday Open House is December 11th.
December 11th, yes. Um, this one is, the David Walker one is the, a tip administrative adjustment.
Right, so whenever, um, projects get modified by communities that submit, uh, through the MPO, you can see there's a list of projects here. They have to actually make an amendment to the, to the, uh, tip, the project scope and list. So I think it's just always a good idea to keep up to speed on sort of the latest projects that are in there, and what they do as projects may change or drop off the list or drop in priority. So it's really just an administrative adjustment of the project cost, but it's something that will give you a sense of the different projects that are out there and sort of what's been in the queue and what other communities are really looking for to fund. That way, when we're in the queue to get funding, we typically won't put something in unless we actually mean business on it, which is not always what happens with some of these, so, um, but it's just something to be aware of.
Thank you. Okay, and that is it. So, next time will be December 2nd, which will be right after the holiday, and that's all I have. There's no non-public session, so.
Move to your turn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.